Going to call to order the council meeting for the ninth of September twenty five. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Sir, right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, I'm as present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
So, public comment. Any person wishing to address the City Council or any of the associated agencies on anything on the agenda, except the public hearing may do so at this time. Hearing no comment. We move on to item one, CSA one and H one.
Want registered?
We're receiving file that. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance approving Zone Code Amendment Number twenty-five dash zero 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 one to modify miscellaneous regulations in Chapter twelve of the Inglewood Municipal Code related to accessory dwelling units, fence regulations, and public art reviews citywide.
Has a notice of hearing been given in the time, form, and manner as required by law?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received?
No, Mayor, no communications have been received.
Mr. City Manager, is staff reporting on the matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our newest director, Bernard McCrumby, will be providing the staff.
Congratulations.
I don't know, Mr. McCrumby, no pressure, but we're going to see if you got what it takes, buddy.
Does it drop come with the tire or what? Good afternoon, happy to be here. As, as staff administers zoning code, our zoning code daily, we periodically encounter provisions that are outdated, unclear, and no longer effective. As we continue to provide excellent customer service, staff is always looking at ways we can modify our code to establish clear standards that are easily understood and enforceable. To address a few areas of concern, staff presented three issues to the Planning Commission, which, following a public hearing, recommended approval to this body for adoption. Issue one relates to accessory dwelling units. Currently, the code allows a maximum ADU height of one story or sixteen feet. In January, HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, released an updated ADU handbook, which modified the maximum height to eighteen feet plus an additional two feet for the, to create the ability to match the roof pitch. What this in effect does is now raises that height requirement from sixteen feet to twenty feet, while still being able to maintain our design standard of matching the current roof pitch of the existing primary dwelling. We are also maintaining our height, our maximum story regulation of, of once a single story as opposed to two. So, some people may just get some high, very high ceilings associated with this, this provision. But it's still a single story, still one story. As, as mentioned, the, you know, staff is constantly receiving calls and requests, and there's been a number of calls that we've had with HCD to modify our, our code to, to fall in line with state standard, which is why we brought this forward. The second issue relates to fence permit regulations. Currently, a fence permit is required only for fences that exceed four feet in height. The problem with this outdated standard is that it's creating, it's allowed, created inconsistent enforcement. And so if someone builds a fence that's three feet in height, that may not necessarily meet our design standards, then they're, they were exempt from requiring a permit, and it's been causing some issues. And so in order to rectify that, we are now requiring a fence permit for all fences and walls regardless of height. Now, this allows staff the opportunity to get a look at the fence design, to modify it and ensure it complies with the code, and it creates a clear enforceable standard for code enforcement and other enforcement agencies to be able to enforce our regulations. Also, it should be noted that we're going to, as we continue to look at our fence regulations, future code amendments will be coming down the pipeline to further standardize our fence guidelines and regulations. Lastly, the, the third miscellaneous amendment is the removal of the Planning Commission review for public art. And this also is in line with another code amendment that came through Library Services. What's happening now is our Planning Commission currently reviews the location for all public art that goes through, through our Development Public Arts Program. The Library Services Division is the primary body that looks at the art design, and they have a recommending body, which is the Art Commission, that also weighs in on what's being proposed. What staff is, is looking to do is to remove some of the red tape associated with the development process. We believe that, you know, the city manager, his designee, can, can assign the Planning Division the opportunity to review the location of that public art and, and approve it, since that's what we generally do on a day-to-day basis. So, we're trying to help streamline a development review process and remove some procedural overlap. It's just been that way for some time. We have an opportunity to kind of fix that and create a streamlined approach to approval. There have been no public comments related to this issue, it's consistent with the general plan, and a notice of exemption has been prepared. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, you might have.
Receiving file the staff report. Is there any public comment? This is hearing no public comment.
Motion away for the reading, Mayor.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Move item one.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye, I want to introduce consent calendar, items two through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye. DR one and DR two.
You are, oh, and.
DR one and H two.
An H two?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's DR one and H two.
Okay, staff report presenting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four basic fiscal statements for the City of Inglewood and the City of Inglewood Housing Authority.
Receiving file. SPH one.
Staff report requesting the mayor and council members set a public hearing to consider General Plan Amendment Number twenty-four dash zero 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 two, allowing a request to amend the land use element map of the Inglewood General Plan from low density to medium density for an approximately sixty-eight acre site that includes Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School with approximately twenty-three acres designated for a proposed multiple family residential development at AINs four zero three zero dash zero three three dash nine zero one, four zero three zero dash zero three three dash nine zero three, and four zero three zero dash zero three three dash nine zero four.
Set the public hearing for September thirtieth at twenty twenty-five at two P M, SPH two.
Staff report requesting the mayor and council members set a public hearing to consider Zone Change Number twenty-four dash zero 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 one, a request to amend the zoning from R one to R three for an approximately sixty-eight acre site that includes Morningside High School and Monroe High School with approximately twenty-three acres designated for a proposed multiple family residential development at AINs four zero three zero dash zero three three dash zero nine, nine zero one, four zero three zero dash zero three three dash nine zero three, and four zero three zero dash zero three three dash nine zero four.
And we'll change that to Monroe Middle School.
Okay.
And we'll set the public hearing for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at two P M, O one.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members introduce an ordinance adding a new Article nine to Chapter three of the Ingle Municipal Code and performing auxiliary code maintenance elsewhere in the IMC.
Motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye, who'd like to introduce?
I'll introduce.
And so now we move on to A one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The records reflect that the City Council met in closed session to discuss the single item posted on today's agenda. With respect to that item, the City Council received a report from staff. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken. Thank you, and I have nothing to report under A two.
CM one.
Nothing to report, sir.
And so now, there are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. So, oh, there are? You got to hand it to me.
Oh, no, 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 you forgot.
What did I forget? Oh, oh, city, oh, CC one.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Just wanted to, one, congratulate Bernard on his appointment as the director. Congratulations, job well done. Also wanted to give kudos to our emergency preparedness department. They did a fantastic job over the weekend, Saturday, with getting our residents prepared for disaster if, if one was to happen. Also, voter registration day, National Voter Registration Day, will be held September the sixteenth. That's next Tuesday. Our theme is Votchella. It's like Coachella, but it's Votchella. We're going to have so many fun things, every, you know, free hot dogs, we have free road ice cream. We will be raffling off MacBooks. Now, if you don't come, I can't help you. So, I'm telling you, get there early and put your name in the drawing, because you may be one of the ones to receive a MacBook. And I'm just telling you, we have more than one, two, three, four, we have a few to raffle off. So, you would want to be there to, to, to experience this great event. The County Registered Recorders Office will be there, because we have a special upcoming election being held November the fourth. It's a statewide election for redistricting, and if you have any questions about that, we have the county there to answer those questions for you. So, we would love to see you next Tuesday. The mayor and I are partnering to do this together from six o'clock until seven thirty. We will see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
She's doing all the work. I'm just paying for the laptops.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, let's see, there are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment regarding other matters. Any person who wishes to address City Council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere covered on the agenda may do so at this time. One minute.
I'm Brandy Keith with the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and today I'm just excited to share with you a new program that we are now, that we have now made available. This is for businesses in, in the Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange County area. So, businesses in Inglewood that might be involved in goods movement would really benefit from this. It's funding for changing over from gasoline-fueled or diesel-fueled equipment to electric vehicles. We have funding available for charging infrastructure, truck replacement of Class eight trucks, battery electric cargo handling equipment, or locomotive switchers. So, if you would like any more information, please let me know, or you can find it on our website. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Hello, I wanted to talk about affordable housing. I've been in Inglewood for eighteen years. When my husband passed away five months ago, my income was significantly reduced. I need to move. I went and looked at the apartments over there on Florence and La Brea. The rent starts at twenty-eight hundred dollars a month for one bedroom. That's, that's five hundred dollars more than what I'm paying right now that I can't afford to pay. And then I went to the senior citizen's place right down the street on Regent off La Brea. They're not even taking applications. They won't even put your name on a list. They say the list is four years long. So, I'm between a rock and a hard spot. Where do people stay that makes three thousand, four thousand dollars a month? I make too much to stay here and six hundred dollars, two less, to stay over here. Where do we stay? The middle, the middle-income people.
Ma'am, what's your name? Ma'am, what's your name?
Wilma Kaufman.
Okay, Ms. Kaufman, if you have a seat, I don't see.
Keema's here.
Oh, oh, so, so anyway, Assistant City Manager Decatur will tell you what we can do, if anything. All right?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jason Scott. I'm with the Center of Hope, and I just want to thank the city for allowing us to be a partner with them with the GPAC Next Level program this past Sunday, I mean, Saturday, I'm sorry. Just want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you. So now we'll go to, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to the mayor and council remarks. We'll start with District one, Councilwoman Gloria Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me congratulate Bernard on his promotion, Bernard McCrumby, well deserved. I also want to comment on what the city clerk said. Voter Registration Event is coming up next, I think it's on the twenty-third. Next Tuesday. Real important, you all know how important it is to vote. Please come out to that event, I encourage everyone. So, I just wanted to mention that. Also, I'd like the mayor to join the meeting today in the name of Reyna, R E Y N A Medina, who passed away last week. She's a longtime resident of Inglewood District one. She's lived here for over fifty years. Many of her sons have worked for the city. In fact, one son was an IPD officer, Raymond Medina, and currently Felipe Medina works for the city. We're all happy, I know I'm happy to be back here on the dais, and I want to wish hopefully that everyone had a safe and wonderful Labor Day weekend. Let's see, also, last month, I want to congratulate and mention that two Inglewood police recruits graduated from the LAPD Academy, Officer Travis Hanneman and Officer Dion Montgomery. They are an outstanding example of dedication, determination, so congratulations to them, there they are. I was also honored to attend, along with the mayor and, I think, everyone on the dais, was that Maury Morales's OFA, OFA Kids Scholarship Event at the Creaseade Christian Church on Saturday, August twenty-third. Mar, Morales is just a wonderful addition to this city. She does great things, and so was the great event. Senior Pastor Princeton Parker and founder members Bishop Virgil and Pastor Jerry Patterson. I want to thank them for including me, there is a picture. Also, the mayor and I attended Briarwood's sixtieth anniversary, sorry to say wedding anniversary, but anniversary. I was a wonderful event, along with Congresswoman Maxine Waters was there. I want to thank co-chairs Carone Crew, Blackburn, and Vicky Franklin for inviting us there. It was a wonderful event. Also, this past month, the Fred Games had their games again at Darby Park. Wonderful event, the organizers, Sidney Jackson, Eric Johnson, Kim Walters, Naomi Daniels. Thank you all for inviting me, part of the Divine Nine. That's Dee Smoke there, yeah, he was there also. Mayor, can I have just a few more minutes? Just one more minute, please.
You start with one.
Few more minutes. Last Thursday, I had my walk-in meetings at ACOB Center every fourth Thursday, four to six. They're always popular. I have a whole lot of people that come in and, and talk about their issues, and I want to thank them for coming. But I also want to thank staff. Staff is so responsive, they always address those issues, so thank you. Brian Walker's event, Emergency Management Expo, was outstanding. Brian, you did a great job. Also, pickleball opened at Darby Park. I saw, I think the mayor was trying to play poker ball, I'm not sure, but he was there. He was there, and thank you to Thomas Yule and Doris Yuba and Kendrick Burns, pickleball people are so passionate. Look at all those players there, very passionate about pickleball. Wonderful reopening of the courts, and they were so very, very happy. Jason mentioned about it's the, the event at the City Center of Hope. Thank you to Next Level, Brian, not Brian, but Bernard McCrumby for, for doing that, so thank you. The last pitch you saw was Seventy-seventh Street Block Club. The mayor was there, he was playing dominoes, I think he was out there trying to dance a little bit, too.
I actually won.
And also Angela was there, too, so we had a great time. Thank you to Crystal Alexander and also Coco, I think Jackie Coco, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
I embarrassed you.
Not a bit.
Never, never.
Councilman Padilla, District two, will be next.
There you go, thank you, Mayor. Again, congrats Bernard on your promotion there, here with our, within our city family. So, well deserved, long time coming. Congrats. You know, I had the okay, the opportunity this past weekend, I went over to the, the pump track over at Vincent Park. And if you haven't been there, you, you gotta just owe it to yourself to go by and check it out. Thomas, you all, you, your staff, the way you guys keep that thing moving, the kids out there on these bicycles, and, and some of the kids on their skateboards are, are amazing. I mean, these folks, I mean, they're, they're going way up in the, in the sky and turning their bikes every way sideways, upside down, just the talent. And the folks that are coming, I talked to folks that came from, I mean, just like, you know, towards Orange County, towards, because they, they've heard about our pump track. And so it's amazing, I, I didn't realize how huge a success it would continue to be, and we've had a few events there. But it's just, if you haven't been there, you owe it to yourself. Go to Vincent, Vincent Park, check out the pump track. Again, Saturday, kudos to Brian Walker, Crystal McGlover, all their staff. Amazing expo for emergency preparedness, the vendors that were out there in force, sharing information for all of our residents and visitors, because we had folks from outside of Inglewood. Like we always say, there's our firefighters. When we do things in Inglewood, it's regional. It's about helping families, not only here in our community, but outside the community, and that's what this expo was about. We, folks were able to come out, talk to people, how to prepare your family, how to prepare being in your car when you're visiting people on vacation, the holidays coming, make sure you have your, 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 your first aid kits up and running. So, it was really nice to, to have all the vendors there. So, Brian Walker, kudos to you and your staff, great presentation. I invite everybody to come out Saturday, September twentieth. Our Hispanic Heritage and our Classic Car Show will be in downtown Market Street here in Inglewood. It kicks off at eleven A M. We'll have live entertainment. If you're looking to put your car in the car show, it's too late. I'm booked up, which is a good thing. We're at like a hundred and seventy cars. I don't know where we're going to put them, but that's where we're at, and that's a good problem to have. But come on out, we're going to have some great entertainment, some great vendors. Again, some, some good information for everybody. Mayor, if you do the honor and the privilege of closing, in the name of a dear friend of mine, a hundred and two years young, who passed away, Judge Albert D. Matthews, my next-door neighbor. May his soul rest in eternal peace. He's one of the first judges, minority judges, was out in, in different courts, and very, very well respected, not only for being a judge, for just being himself. So, may you rest in peace, Judge.
Okay, now we move to District four, Councilwoman Dion Falk.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate Bernard McCumbry on your promotion. You're going to be amazing, looking forward to you taking that position to the next level. And we're, you know, our Assistant City Manager, you got your work cut out for you in your new role. You're going to take that position to the next level, right? Next level, that's the thing. And so I am looking forward to attending the city clerk's event. I don't know what chella means, but I'm sure you're going to let us know what that means, right? Votchella, I'm looking forward to it. I know it's going to be so much fun. So, please make sure you bring your family and friends out to the city clerk's voter registration event. It's going to be hot, food fun for the family. And she is highlighting a very important event that's coming up in November, which is the November fourth special election that is happening, as you all know. Our assembly members has, have been working overtime to make sure that this special election happens, so we have to rock the vote in November. So, thank you so much, City Clerk, for all that you do. Want to shout out our emergency services, Brian Walker, Crystal McGlover, the whole team, they did an amazing job. And then, of course, we have, you know, all of our vendors that were there that made the event so special, so great. And then Thomas, you all, his staff are making sure that, you know, the facilities and everything were there. So, it was a lovely event, very well attended and prepared our residents for, you know, future potential emergencies. So, I think that it was a great event, it's well needed, and I love that they prioritize that every year. So, thank you so much. Again, I want to shout out Bernard McCumbry and, and his team for the Next Level event, and Center of Hope. Love Center of Hope, it's a beautiful church, actually, and I attend services there from time to time. Please give my love to Pastor Dixon, love him. And thank you so much for always welcoming City of Inglewood for events, and it was a wonderful event. I was there with my colleagues, and we highlighted our general plan, and so it was well attended. There we are, and so thank you so much, and I, I think we will have some good participation going forward as well. I want to let everyone know that I have my town hall coming up, September seventeenth. It's going to be at Hollywood Park Casino, six P M. We have lots of important updates to share with you all. And a few of them, there have been a lot of people in District four asking me about, so you might want to come, because there's going to be some really good announcements there. So, please come out and make sure you're there for that announcement. Again, that's going to be at Hollywood Park Casino, September seventeenth. We will have refreshments. See my office if you have any other questions. And I think that, my last announcement is that I have been very blessed for sixteen years to be married to my husband, Shannon Falk. So, I want to acknowledge that we celebrated our sixteenth anniversary over the weekend. We were married September sixth, and so I love you, honey. Thank you so much for putting up with me for sixteen years. Not the easiest. Not the easiest person, I know it, but I just want to, I know. We do that to each other. I know, but I... So thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Let's give her a hand, you guy.
Applause for Shannon. For Shannon.
And now, we have District Three.
Thank you, sir.
Wait a minute, Councilman Hila Morales, who gets at least 90% of the vote every time he runs for reelection.
My God. What do I do to deserve that? Thank you for my introduction. I like that. No, I'll keep it brief. That was your setup for that? Thank you. You know, first of all, chela, chela means beer. You happen to be doing it on Mexican Independence Day, so big party at the City Clerk's office on Tuesday. And Bernard, of course, I thought we were picking the other guy, but congratulations.
That's cold, man. You deserved it, Bernard.
No, let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. So I called Bernard a couple days ago, because I'm like, you know, every time, you know, you'd think it happens more often, but when the right thing happens, it feels good. And, you know, if a person grows up in the City of Inglewood, goes, gets his education, comes back, works hard, this is what's supposed to happen. And, you know, we take care of our own, and our own take care of us. And we really appreciate that. And, you know, we had our own conversation, Bernard, I'm big on you. You know, you will even grow. You'll even grow there. So we're lucky to have you, man. We're lucky to have you. So outside of that, I went to most of those events as well, but I do want to talk about the Office of Emergency Services and Brian Walker. You know, I have to tell you that, I said it that day, but the big deal there was that we have a department that, for a city our size, is amazing. Amazing. I mean, they look to him to build out strategies for humongous events, right? You know, when the Super Bowl was here, he was well involved. When, he's already talking about the FIFA, the Olympics, and everything else. And what it does is, it really does capture, you know, who he is, not only here in the city, but in the field, in the field, and where that puts us. You know, and we don't tout our staff enough, but I'll tell you that our staff is amazing all the way across the board, all the way across the board. So I just want to take the moment to thank Brian for putting in the effort, his staff, Dr. Crystal, who's around here, who usually is here. But anyway, she did a great job, too, his entire staff. Great day. It was super hot, and, you know, we pulled it out. So anyway, that's all I have this week. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I want to congratulate Bernard as well. I always feel good when I see young people ascend, you know? I went through that myself, and he has done such a great job. I felt the same way I did when Yekima ascended multiple times. And it is good that we have an environment that we're able to develop in-house talent the way that we do. So Bernard, congratulations to you, my man. I think the world of you. Really think the world of you. Want to congratulate Brian Walker as well. He's the Department Head of Emergency Management. When I came back to the city, we had one part-time person in emergency management. And since then, we have evolved, since we're an international tourist destination, have international sports and entertainment events. And so Brian worked for me as a captain and assistant chief at the Los Angeles Royal Airport System in the Police Department. And we're fortunate to have someone of his capacity to lead our emergency preparedness And I want to note Thomas Yul and Theresa Estrada for how far Parks and Rec has come. We have new baseball fields. We have new basketball courts, all sponsored by professional sports teams. We're working on redoing the football and soccer fields in the east end of Edward Vincent, redoing them, because we've already done them, spent a few million to do them before. Now it's time to do them again. This pump track is amazing. It's the only facility of its type between here and Orange County. It is legendary. And I just think about what we offer to our residents. Alex and his car shows, I don't know, we may have to like buy a parcel of land to put all those cars on pretty soon. But Alex really, really is an anchor of the community when it comes to galvanizing the car community, and we appreciate that. Something that I've missed, and I don't miss many things, but Councilman Gray and Councilman Padilla got in my ear about pickleball. And I said, what is pickleball? And it's a very popular sport in the senior crowd, and now the younger crowd as well. And so we were behind the curve, and we created a program-coordinated position for racket sports. And I want to thank Thomas Yul and Doris Obi for what they have done. Everybody that was there, had a phone, everybody that was there, they were so, I mean, excited. It felt like you don't have to go to Westchester to have quality stuff. You don't have to go to Santa Monica to have quality stuff. And I like that. I like Inglewood having everything that is the best. And with that, let's see if I got everything. Pump track, okay? Hold on a second. And I want to close in the name of Reyna Medina and Judge Albert D. Matthews. Now, we're gonna close, but anybody that's watching, we're about to show an IUSD podcast. And so anyone that's interested, we're gonna show you something about the school district. And with that, we're adjourned.
Hello, and welcome to our new show called IUSD Unplugged. My name is Patrick Cruz, and I'm a junior at City Honors International Preparatory. I'm thrilled to have you as we explore the people, stories, and the spirit that makes IUSD so great.
And my name's Amaya Hazard, a senior at Inglewood High School United, where students in IUSD bring you this new, amazing, exciting new series to bring you honest conversation about what's happening in our schools. This year, we're bringing together some of the most amazing, boldest voices, leaders who are right in the thick of it, tackling real challenges that affect our students, our schools, our communities, and our families. But before we dive in, Patrick, I have to ask you, this year was full of big moments. What was your biggest takeaway?
My biggest takeaway was our day of dialogue that we had at Morningside High School. It was very important to our students, because we talked about, you know, the new school logo, the name, and what we're gonna offer there at that high school. So I do congratulate our principal, Dr. Collins, for his hard work. And to you, what was your biggest takeaway last year?
Well, I'd have to say the Black History Month program at Inglewood High School. This program was completely student-led, from the decor, from the art, as well as even the script. This was a beautiful event, and is just the start to a widespread amount of student-led events across the district.
Thank you so much, Amaya, for expanding on that.
Stay tuned. Coming next, a visit from Dr. James Morris, our county administrator. Hello, everyone. Welcome back to IUSD Unplugged. Dr. Morris, our county administrator, thank you for coming. Can you start by explaining the school closures and consolidations? What's behind this decision?
Well, thank you for the great question, Amaya. School closures and consolidations are happening in our district so that we can do a better job of educating the students who attend schools in Inglewood. We are going to make sure by closing schools that we're doing a better job of providing programs and resources and having schools that are in better repair. The schools that are going to stay open will be schools that will be beautiful and clean and deserving of the students in this community.
And to your point, a lot of students and families are concerned about what these changes mean. So what is your message to them?
Thank you, Patrick. Absolutely correct. There are some concerns. Anytime there's change, it causes a little bit of uncomfortable feelings that parents have and that students have. I think the most important message to communicate is, this is happening to help us do a better job and provide a better education for the young people in our community. We're going to be able to offer more programs and resources at the schools that are remaining open. And at the end of the day, it really is about student academic achievement and making sure that we have strong instructional programs for students. And one additional thing, this school consolidation and closure opportunity is giving us a chance to reimagine our school district. What is possible? What are the best ways that we can serve students and give them a great education? So it really is an opportunity for us to reimagine Inglewood Unified.
Thank you. So before we conclude, would you like to say anything else to our viewers?
I think probably the most important thing I'd like to say is to compliment you, Patrick, and Amaya. I think student leadership is so important in our school district, and the voice of students can guide us and help us to do a better job. I think it's really important, and I really salute the two of you for taking on IUSD Unplugged.
Thank you so much, Dr. Morris, for being with us. Don't move, stay right there. And up next, I would like to introduce our amazing principals, Dr. Araya and Dr. Collins.
Hello, everyone. Welcome back to IUSD Unplugged. Principal Araya, how have your students and teachers at City Honors responded to the announcement about school closures?
Well, Amaya, that is a great question. I think with any new news, there's angst, there is confusion, there are a lot of questions. And so our parents have a lot of questions, and so do we. And we try to stay as transparent as we can with them, and we're in it together. We just let them know that, you know, we're in this together. And so I think through that process, our parents are with us every step of the way.
Thank you so much, Dr. Araya. Now I want to transition to Dr. Collins, the principal of Inglewood High School. IUSD is talking about new academics at Inglewood High School in general. So as principal, tell us more about that.
Yeah, so this year, we're going to the academy model, where there will be three academies. One is for early college, and if you go through that academy for four years, you will graduate with an associate's degree. The other two are STEM and AME. And those are based on student interest. But here's the powerful part. If you go through those pathways, when you finish, you will have completed an industry partnership and also have a certificate, which will almost guarantee that you'll be marketable in your field, because you'll network with people in the industry that you want to go into.
Beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Collins. Dr. Araya, is there anything you'd like to add?
Sure. At City Honors, we're also expanding on our AME pathways. We've created a new pathway for cybersecurity with one of our local partnerships through dual enrollment. And we're just constantly trying to grow our programs. We've also started a wellness program with our ninth and 10th graders, and so we're so excited about expanding that as well.
And Dr. Collins, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, this is such an exciting time for Inglewood Unified. I mean, I know it's sad for a lot of people that love Morningside, and I just want to assure you that the traditions of Morningside will be upheld. We will not forget about Morningside. We are united. We still are one. We are Inglewood, and we're excited about the future.
Additionally, our city, Inglewood, is going through a renaissance at the time, and so are our schools. And I'm very proud to announce that we have a brand-new school opening up. It's called the Ivyvee and Young Center, IYC, and I'll be the principal of that school. The school will be focused on technology, entrepreneurship, and design thinking. And so we wanted to create something different for our students. It is non-traditional, but we're so excited that this is coming to us. We're opening up, which is ninth graders. And so stay tuned for more information about this amazing school.
You know what, Dr. Araya, that just reminds me. Another thing I want to say about Inglewood High School United is, we're adding an additional administrator and an additional counselor, which means there will be a low ratio of students to counselors. Students will receive the opportunity to be advised on their college and careers like they've never been before. Also, we have partnerships with LMU, partnerships with UCLA, Dominguez Hills, El Camino. I mean, we are raising the bar. As a matter of fact, when your child comes to Inglewood Unified School District, they are going to get a top-notch education and an opportunity to either go join the job market or go to the career college of their choice.
Thank you, Principal Araya and Collins. We're so grateful we get to hear your voices on this amazing series. Thank you for tuning into IUSD Unplugged.
A celebration taking place today in Inglewood to mark the new Ivyvee and Young
The one and only Andre "Dr. Dre" Young and Jimmy Ivyvee, music moguls and co-founders of Beats Electronics, have teamed up with the Inglewood Unified School District to open a new high school, the Ivyvee and Young Center.
A high school where traditional classes merge.
The goal, of course, is to create a school with a cutting-edge curriculum that includes classes in design, technology, and entrepreneurship.
Well, Inglewood's up to some good. We believe that this will differentiate them in the workforce and in colleges. To go out and say you have an education in interdisciplinary learning and being able to collaborate with different disciplines and innovate is an advantage.
County Administrator Morris says this new academy will be another option for Inglewood students and is a sign of the new direction the district is headed.
We have the YMCA coming in to build a new YMCA center. We have a early college program that's opening up at Inglewood High School. We have so many good things happening for young people in this community. This is a new day for Inglewood Unified.
Today, we heard from leaders who are working very, very hard to make sure that every student is getting the best education possible.
We also learned that big change can lead to big opportunities, but only if students, families, and leaders work together.
Absolutely. Now, if you wish to stay informed about any district event, meeting, or anything, please visit inglewoodusd.com to please stay informed.
Thank you for tuning into IUSD Unplugged. We'll be back with more Real Talk straight from our schools.